Sorry Beth, I usually keep a better handle on that.
That's your stick laying at home, not like, didn't you?
We want Randy somewhere.
Randy?
Yeah.
There was pretty good.
It's really, because I have my life, it depends on what happens every day.
Today is Tuesday, it's January 18, 2011, and I will call this meeting of the Norfolk City Council to order. This is an open meeting, and I will advise you posted in the northwest corner of this actual room is the Open Meeting Act, therefore made accessible to members of the public. So with that, I would ask you to join with us, stand, join with us in a moment of silence in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll continue with roll call. Coy?
Here.
Langy?
Here.
Merrill? Watson?
Here.
Murrell?
Here.
Brenneman?
Here.
House?
Here.
Saunders? Under action items, I would ask for approval of the consent agenda as was provided you.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
A motion and a second, if you will please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative.
And as well, I'd ask for action for approval on the full agenda before us tonight.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda, full agenda, again if you will please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative.
Okay. And with that, we'll move right on to a recreation update. Shane, I would look to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we're working hard, as usual. What we asked DLR and Burbach Aquatics to do is provide us a recreation update for the council, which we've been doing kind of just verbally, and I'm going to just read some of the comments that they've made and some of the updates. First off, from DLR, one thing, we've been working well with the National Guard and bringing the plan together to facilitate the whole project, and in particular, the parking. And I'm glad to say that we're at or above minimum requirements for parking. We've got 567 total parking spaces, the way it looks right now, if nothing changes on the plans. So that's a nice positive impact we'll have once the whole thing is developed. A lot of concrete, but a lot of great parking to take care of those issues that we've had over the years there with mud and rain and snow and just pedestrian travel and vehicle travel. So that's a wonderful thing for the project. We've been working with NPPD and DLR and Burbach, and they've been, as always, have been nothing but fantastic to work with, been very helpful in the power requirements, and really have cleared any obstacles that have came up. They've cleared for us and for the architects and engineers that are working on the project. So DLR made that comment to us, and we couldn't agree more with NPPD's responsiveness to the project. We worked hard on, with the Veterans Group, I had a couple of representatives from the Veterans Group, American Legion of VFW. One of the nice things about this project is it is a Veterans Memorial Park, and as we can't remind ourselves enough of, you know, without the veterans of our great nation, we wouldn't be able to sit here today and do the things we do in this society. And I just think, I'll just give a shout out to those veterans out there that are fighting for our country right now as we speak. But working with those groups, we came up with some nice plans, and one of the things that we're considering then is, and the veterans are working on the design as we speak, is on one of the big sides of the new bathhouse and the new multi-use facility that we're putting down there, the locker room-bathhouse combination, is doing some pre-cast concrete with some murals, recognizing the veterans' sacrifices, and that's a design that the veterans' group are working on right now, and they're going to be real timely with their responses back on that, you know. The cost of that is something that is, we don't know exactly what the cost of. I know we get asked frequently where the $100,000 that Big Red Keno has given us for the project is going to go, and one of the suggestions is that it goes directly towards those murals, and maybe blending those dollars in with the entrance and making that entrance into the park really nice and visible and stand out, outish for lack of better words, I think. And I think that's an excellent idea. I think there's, those dollars would definitely be used down at Memorial Park, and I don't want anyone to think that we forgot about them or they're squirreled away somewhere else, because they aren't, and they're going to be in that project. But that's two examples of where they could be possibly used, and I think they're two excellent examples of where that $100,000 would go a long way to making that park shine. We are bidding the project, and I think I've told you this before possibly, but we are bidding the project. DLR is bidding the project two ways and two completion dates, one in the fall of 2011 and one in the fall of 2012. We want to understand what those completion dates do to naturally the timeline, but more importantly, the dollars that we're investing in this project. So we want to know what those dollars look like so we can make good decisions on what would be prudent for the completion of the product. So we will be seeing those numbers as they come forth. Burbach's update, I'll just kind of read this verbatim, because it's a nice little quote here, I think, that the community would appreciate. As of January 13, 2011, Burbach Aquatics has been continuing to prepare plans and specifications for the new Veterans Memorial Park, Aquatic Center, and multipurpose bathhouse. At this point in time, the plans and specifications are approximately 40% complete and proceeding smoothly and on schedule. Three project design development meetings have been conducted with the city's project team. These meetings have been very productive and have allowed our design team to capture project details proposed by the city project team. Numerous suggestions and improvements have been thoroughly discussed and incorporated into the project. BAI has moved the public bidding date ahead by one week. As of this report, the cost, intent, and spirit of the project, as approved by the voters, is proceeding on schedule and on budget, unquote. So from their perspective, you know, the water piece of the facility is a major piece, obviously, and from Burbach's perspective, it's on schedule and going smoothly. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have or the audience may have about the update.
We own the, I'm Denise Weber, and we own the property at 812 Logan, which is on the 50-yard line of Memorial Field. We know that there was, the city has always said there's an alley back there, but there's never been an alley back there, and I know you want to take that land back. We understand this, but we want to know how that's going to affect our property since we have a fence up there, and if we're going to have the cost of having to redo our fence, plus, you know, we've maintained this property, we've owned it for 10 years, the people prior to us maintained it for 30 years. So I guess we'd really like to know exactly how much we're losing and where we're losing this, and how it's going to situate for our yard back there. And I am concerned, too, that now, with the five homes that are located behind that field, you know, before we had bright lights every Friday night, maybe two or three times other times of the year, but now we're looking at a facility that's going to be used six to nine months of the year, where we're going to have bright lights shining in windows besides noise levels for people that occupy these homes, and then we have a water park that's going to be approximately open for three solid months, seven days a week, 12 to 16 hours a day, that the noise level there, too, will affect the valuation and everything of these properties back there. Is there any thoughts of ever removing those properties from that area?
You mean for the city purchasing those properties?
Because it's butts up against all of this that you're doing.
Right. Not at this time, though, there hasn't been any intent to buy up those properties, you know, that's something that has been discussed. The difficulty part about that is finding the money to do that, because the same, the properties owners in front of, on First Street have potential, have similar concerns that you would have, and to bring that all together and stay in budget is obviously outside of the law and proposal that was in front of the voters. I can't, I won't say never, I won't say that the city wouldn't be interested in that. I think there's some potential as things change in the future, but at this time, there's no plan to buy any of those properties.
Well, we know exactly then what we're going to lose and how it's going to affect us cost-wise and what we're going to have to do to our property.
As far as the alley?
This is Weber.
Yeah.
Will you do me a favor and come forward just so that, and use the microphone? I'm sorry, I should have, that way everybody's, yep, if you would, please. State your name for us, and I appreciate you being here, believe me, I didn't mean to interrupt, but.
I'm Denise Weber, and we own the property at 812 Logan, and if you're familiar with that, we're on the 50-yard line of Memorial Field is our backyard. And so the, we looked into eminent domain four years ago so that property would be ours, because we had maintained it for seven years, but I realize you can't take property from the city, and that's not possible.
Yep.
So with this, what I'm asking is, will we know, you know, like, right now, we have a fence that butts up to the city fence. It's going to cost us to change this and move things and do things, and is that totally our responsibility then, because now you're taking that property back that we've maintained for 10 years?
Is that your responsibility to move the fence? Well, we're going, the alley's 20 feet, alley's 20 feet, that's city property, so we're going, that's what the council's considering to vacate this evening and complete that process this evening is on the docket. They don't have to, it's on second reading, they have to do it for three readings, so if the alley vacation goes forth, we'll be taking it back, not really back, we'll be assuming the ownership again of that vacated alley, so that 20 feet will become, is the city's and will remain the city's, and those fences would have to be moved accordingly. They'd have to be moved.
So whose expense is this then, at that time? Because I know we're not the only property with fences back there.
Well, in reality, the fences are on city property, so, you know, everybody wants to be good neighbors and take care of that, and I think we can work out a solution where we can work together and get those property, get those fences moved if the neighbors are willing to do that. But at the end of the day, they're on city property, so we're going to have to get those fences moved one way or the other, hopefully with the participation of the property owners.
Okay. And then along with this, now there will not be another, like, alley back there or anything where we're going to have problems with people parking, litter, that type of problems?
No, there will not be an alley back there, so you won't be able to access that with vehicles or anything else, and we will be providing the north-south fence on our property line. So you'll see a fence physically out the back of those properties or those homes, you'll see a fence that the city will provide. So the east-west fences, they, there are some, some of the property owners have fences, some do not.
Right.
Your east-west fence?
Correct.
Will be shortened, and then we'll provide a fence in, that will connect to that, so then we will put that in.
Shane, in that, is there any indication that we might put a soundproof fence or do more than just a wire fence at this time, or is there?
Well, we want to blend that fence, that whole perimeter fence, right now, we're discussing with DLR and with Burbach what we're going to do with that perimeter fence as you see it now, whether that can go away. Some of that, I think, actually can go away, and then we'll blend those fences back in with the entire project so it all comes together. But right now, we're looking at two different options, we're looking at a fence similar to what you see now, but we're not so prison-like looking, or a similar version like that, that's powder coated, but the cost of all of those kind of things is going to be important to the project, so.
Well, probably one of my biggest concerns is the activity after hours, or even during, like, football games, or those activities where you see people on the opposite side of the fence, not inside, and I don't want those people in my backyard, basically.
So would it be preferable that you see the, you know, like, slats or something in there, so you could not see through there at all?
I think that'd be favorable, because if you have went to very many football games, you will see quite a few people over there standing on the opposite side of the fence not to pay to get in.
That's something we can talk about as we meet with the architects and engineers and see if that's feasible, that, that's a fairly simple process to put those kind of barriers in there, so we have a visual barrier between the residential neighborhood and the recreation that's going on there. That's something we do in a lot of places, we require in the zoning, as we change categories and zoning, we require those as we transition from one, from recreation, or not from residential to a commercial setting, so we, you know, those kind of things I think can be done.
Okay.
So that would, if that would protect your vision out your back door, if you prefer that, those kind of things can be done.
Yeah, that'll help, you know, there's nothing you're going to be able to do, though, for soundproofing. You know, people swimming and screaming and yelling for 14 hours a day is not going to be real comfortable for a family situation.
Understood. You know, soundproofing is going to be difficult, and it will be noisy, there's no bones about it, you know, kids screaming and having a good time and cheering on football teams and baseball teams and.
Well, we're used to, you know, the once a week and maybe three or four times other than the 10 weeks of football season, but, you know, now that it's going to be utilized weekly, maybe even in some cases every day of the weekends, it's really going to devalue our property.
Well, I can appreciate that, and I, I'll be honest with you, I think the community's intent on the project is to utilize that facility as much as possible. So when you say those kind of things, there'll be increased utilization, I think that's the intent of the community when they spoke, I think that's very real.
I'm glad, I have kids, I'm glad for it, but in the same respect, you know, you've just taken a property of ours and devalued it quite a bit, and in the same respect, my income off of it as a rental, because I will not be able to charge what I'm charging to and keep that maintained or full.
So this is, this.
This particular one is a rental of ours, but we live another two blocks from there, so, you know.
You don't live right there?
Yeah.
And when I talked, I talked to all your neighbors, except for one, I did not talk to the one gentleman that didn't have an interest in the home anymore, and, you know, they've had varied opinions on the project, but generally were supportive, and some that were extremely supportive and some were that were kind of neutral, and I talked to your husband, I believe, about that, and he had some concerns about the same ones that you're sharing.
That's kind of why I'm here. All right, I just wanted to make those noted, you know, because it will, you know, those particular five houses with where they sit and everything, you know, baseball doesn't affect them as much, and really even the water park won't, but it will be the football and soccer facility that'll affect them the most.
Sure, and those bleachers will be coming closer to that property line, just so you know that, they will be coming closer. But I will tell you this, I mean, we're working hard to try to minimize the encumbrances that you spoke about, and the lighting standards that we're looking at, we're trying to, the electrical engineer that's working on, he's trying really hard to minimize that so it's not shining out into the community and directing that light exactly where it needs to be. But, you know, your concerns as far as noise and lights and action down there, they're all valid, I mean, that's going to happen, and that's part of the project, so I, I don't
Have you ever thought about having a visitor's entrance on that side of the field?
On the east side?
Right.
No. We have talked about a visitor's entrance on the south side of the field, and there will be one there adjacent to that parking lot as it comes around to, from the National Guard area there, and then there'll be a main entrance on the west side of the field.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Is there a question? Take the full 20 feet of the alley.
Right now, we're anticipating taking the full 20 feet, but as the plans come together, if we don't need that 20 feet, then we'll make adjustments accordingly, but right now, we're anticipating taking the full 20 feet.
I appreciate both of you being here tonight and asking your questions, that's the way it should work, so, thank you, I appreciate it. Anything else you need to question, council or?
I would like to add that if they do have questions and they can't get on the agenda or they can't wait, that they should call their council people down there.
Absolutely.
I know both of them live within blocks of them, and they understand the effects of all this, too, and then they can bring it to a subcommittee so they are heard, if they aren't heard, like tonight, so.
Good comment. Thank you, councilman. Anything else? Any of the council has to?
Shane, Burbach's noted, in your report, they were noting that they were going to be ahead of the bidding date by a week. Is that bidding date the same date as the DLR date, or is there any?
No.
Okay. What's that one?
It's later.
May.
May timeframe.
Okay.
Bidding, yeah, right at the beginning of May, the way it looks, we're shooting that commencing, well, that's phase two, actually, yeah, around May 1st, the way it looks, so.
The water piece of the recreation won't be done in the fall of 2011, by the way, for sure, so we know that. The rest, you know, as it comes along, we might have some improvements there, possibly in the fall of 2011, but even, no matter what we do, the community has to appreciate the fact that it's going to be, it's going to be messy down there during football and during the summer construction and during football in this fall, because there's going to be lots and lots of activity, and we're going to be hopefully playing football there one way or the other, either on new turf or on the grass that we got now, so that's just the nature of the business, so I just want to be clear on that.
Okay. Yep. Okay. Are you two planning on staying around as we move forward with a couple, with an action item on the agenda that will affect actually what you're here in regard to the vacating of that alley?
The approval of the second round?
Yep, yep, and there's going to be an amendment to that, so if you're going to stick around, you know, I'd appreciate that, otherwise, as suggested, we might want to give you a little bit more information.
I will stick around.
Thank you. Okay. All right. If nothing else on the recreation, council, good, okay, then we'll move on to looking for Randy to give us the yearly update, the financial year ending September 30, 2011, on the Northeast Nebraska Solid Waste Coalition.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a requirement of the interlocal agreement creating the Solid Waste Coalition. They're required to have a town hall meeting to go over their budget and rates in each of the three largest communities. So Norfolk, Columbus, and Fremont each have one of these town hall meetings to review the budget. Included in the agenda packets is a proposed budget for the year ended September 30, 2011, and the rates remain unchanged at $24 per ton in this budget. The biggest change in the budget is driven by, on both the revenue side and the expenditure side, by refunding bonds that the coalition did last year, and that makes a substantial change in some of the budget dollars. We refunded the coalition's outstanding bonds in June and realized much lower interest rates, but that inflated last year's budget. This year's budget's a more normal budget. One of the things you'll notice in the, at the start of the budget is, beginning fund balances down about $243,000, and that's related to the refunding. We used debt service reserve along with some other cash to refund these bonds. Coalition has an excellent financial position and has operating history now where we didn't have to have a debt service reserve in order to sell the refunding bonds, so that was a favorable thing that happened. Budgeted tonnage goes up 1.9%. Last year's actual tonnage went up 1.9%, and we base our new budget on last year's tonnage. That results in the 1.9% increase you see in coalition tipping fees. Of course, the proceeds of refunding bonds aren't in this year's budget since we completed that in June, and that results in a $2.8 million reduction on the revenue side. Those are the major changes in revenues. On the expenditure side, you know, most expenditures decrease about $4.5 million, and went from about $6.4 million last year to about $1.9 million in the current year. Once again, the primary driver of that is the refunding of the existing debt, that had an almost $3 million decrease in debt service. The other large driver of that is capital outlay. Last year's budget included about $1.4 million for a gas collection system. The board received a report from Burns &amp; McDonald on April 26 that recommended that the coalition not proceed with that gas collection system at the current time, and so the current budget does not include any capital outlay and does not include anything for the gas collection system. Another big change you'll notice in the budget is related to closure-post-closure funding. Coalition went through a re-permitting process last year, you do that, coalition has to do that every five years. As part of that, the engineers go in and look at the closure-post-closure cost, they updated those cost estimates, and that increased the closure-post-closure care cost estimate $6.8 million. At the time we prepared the budget, we knew that was going to impact closure-post-closure funding requirements, we did not know how much that was actually going to go up. We'd only budgeted $43,000 in the year before that. We increased the budgeted transfer to $265,000. We actually got all the costs in and went through all the computations, the actual increase was much less than that, it was, only went up to $153,700. In the current year, budgeted transfer to the closure-post-closure fund is about that same amount of, or $155,000. So that's the reason for the big decrease in the budget transfer to the closure-post-closure fund was, we knew costs were going to go up, we didn't know for sure how much, we didn't know for sure what that impact would be. So that's, results in that $110,000 decrease in transfers. The other big change in the budget on the expenditure side is in other professional fees. As I mentioned, the coalition had re-permitting last year and also refunding the bonds, both of those resulting in some large fees incurred by the coalition. So coalition professional fees decrease over $85,000 in the current year budget. Also included in the agenda packets is a closure-post-closure fund budget. As I discussed, that transfer that the coalition makes every year to fund closure-post-closure care cost is decreasing from the $265,000 budgeted last year to the $155,000 in the current year. That will leave funds available for closure-post-closure care of about $4.3 million, which is about a $200,000 increase from the $4.1 million last year. That's made up of entrance earnings and the transfer that the coalition makes every year to the closure-post-closure fund. Now, these monies will just sit there hopefully for 30 or so years until it comes time to close the landfill, and then we'll have money in the SOC, we'll be able to close the landfill and take care of it for the post-closure period, and that's what those dollars are being accumulated for. And answering any questions?
Questions, council, anyone? There's a lot of numbers thrown there, you've got it all. Hearing none? Randy? Thank you. All right, with that, we'll move on to the presentation of the Fire Division's 2009-10 annual report.
Thanks, Mayor.
Yep.
Well, we had quite a year, as the community recognized, I'm sure, because they were actively involved in a lot of what we did this year, and we had a couple of major events that I hope are at least once-in-a-lifetime or once-in-a-career type of events to deal with from a community standpoint or from a fire department standpoint, and that first one was, was that 30,000-gallon propane fire we had back in December of '09. This report's from, is a fiscal year report, so that's why we're reaching back to there, but that's, it's a fiscal year report. And then we had that major flooding this last summer, which was an event that I know personally I don't want to go through again, I know the community doesn't want to go through again. Then unfortunately, the third major event that we had that kind of rocked our world as firefighters a little bit was that double fatality fire we had out, just outside of the town on our northern border, where we lost two young citizens in that fire, and unfortunately, those kinds of events happen too often, not only here but across the nation, so hopefully they don't happen again, but they probably will, unfortunately. so hopefully they don't happen again, but they probably will unfortunately. We had a lot of calls, again, calls were up a little bit. We learned some new things as firefighters and as paramedics. The medics went through and learned to administer continuous positive airway pressure to patients that are in severe congestive heart failure, that are having difficulty breathing. If you're one of those patients ever, you'll understand the importance of the air we breathe because they really, really have a lot of difficulty and it's a life-threatening emergency. But continuous positive airway pressure does, it's basically a mask and it increases the oxygen content of your lungs and it keeps your lungs expanded out, so it'll force the fluid that's building up in your lungs, force it out of there. It's something that's kind of new to the street medicine that we conduct in the pre-hospital arena, but it really helps us to avoid the need to intubate these patients, which is an advanced skill that we're good at, but we don't like to do because of its complications down the road. So the medics were able to get that training through our medical director and the medical community, and we're proud that that's on the street and being used for our citizens. We continue to do a lot of maintenance, a big part of our job is the maintenance of the equipment. Firefighters have to be ready at a moment's notice, obviously, to do their job, and we test over 23,000 feet of fire hose a year, which, which I know they get a little frustrated by doing that, but they know the benefits of having good quality equipment, and we're very blessed by this community to have that. We pump tested six pieces of fire apparatus and recertified both of our aerials again, one that's fairly new and one that's almost one piece of equipment. The snorkel's almost as old as I am, actually, I'm only six years older than that piece of equipment, so it's been around quite a while. Four of our firefighters did the World Combat Challenge, and I'm proud, proud of those four members. Chad Wardman, Ryan Goodman, Lance Con, Lance and Rachel Conner. We actually got a husband and wife team of firefighters. If the community didn't know that, to one, Lance is a full-time firefighter medic with us, and his wife Rachel is a pharmacist here in town, is a, is a reserve firefighter, and they all four compete in that combat challenge, and they qualified for the world competition. It was held in, just in November down in South Carolina, and they done quite well. They always bring home a flag for us to hang in our Hall of Fame, so we're proud of that. They really set the standard for physical fitness for our department and taking care of that, making sure everybody stays motivated to take care of their bodies and their minds as firefighters, so they do a nice job with that. The record flooding, one thing that the community may or may not have known, but when we were dealing with the flood, we were worried about Highway 81 Bridge, and it was closed down where traffic is, everyone knew. But we started to think real rapidly, okay, what if there's a fire, an emergency across that bridge, what are we gonna do? And early in that process, we got some firefighters over there, a team of off-duty firefighters, six of reserves and paid combination, and two pieces of equipment, an ambulance and a pumper, no, three, and a tanker truck. And we opened fire station number three there for three days. We sat, we slept there and did everything, and those guys handled the emergencies, and they actually were called out three times because we didn't know if we could cross that bridge. The State Patrol had it closed down, and Roads Department had it closed down for obvious reasons, and we were able to operate out of that third fire station, so that's kind of a unique thing for the, for the community there for a short time. While we're out there, they got to meet the governor too, so they were, they were fired up about that. Our regional hazardous materials team continues to do, do their job. They had a number of responses this last year. One of the big things that they did is go out to the, regionally to the hospitals from all the way out to Brown County and kind of all around this area, Northeast Nebraska, and train their emergency room personnel, nurses and administrators in the area hospitals how to handle self-reporting hazmat incidents to the ER if there's, because they're oftentimes the first folks that encounter people that have been exposed to a hazardous substance and that are seeking medical attention, they have to get them decontaminated. So our team goes out there and conducts that training, and it's usually very, very well-received. So that's a bonus there for the operations guys, they are continuing to do their job and work hard to provide all kinds of Johnny-on-the-spot emergency, emergency response to the community. The planning commission this year, one of the things that we help administer at the fire department is a planning commission, approved nine final plats during the fiscal year involving 36 lots. The majority of those lots were residential, and we had four commercial and industrial lots that were platted. Heard 20 public hearings involving eight properties and eight conditional use permits were acted on. Emergency management, as you can imagine, for the region, where the emergency management administrators for the region, which includes Madison County, Pierce County, and Antelope County, was extremely busy with a blizzard over Christmas last year and the Prodyne Fire, and then all the June flooding that we're still recovering from, the area's still recovering from, had a tremendous amount of infrastructure damage. Emergency management was, Faith was in direct contact and helping to navigate everyone through that as emergency manager, especially post-incident, working with FEMA and getting the proper documentation and a proper damage assessments completed with the, with the area responders and elected officials in those, in those areas, so that, that program is solid and has been beneficial for our area since we, since we started that Region 11 Emergency Management Consortium. Our EOC was actually open twice. I've been here for 20 years, and we've opened it, but just for practice, but in the last year, we actually opened it twice, for real, and learned some things from that, and learned some functionality things and importance of continuity of government and importance of elected official involvement in that continuity of government, and big decisions had to be made in a hurry as far as expended resources for this community in order to navigate our way through those kind of major events, and I can assure the community that we're better prepared because of that. Really was, there's nothing, there's no better teacher than experience, and fortunately or unfortunately, we, we were given that opportunity. Reserve Department is very, very active. We got 29 reserve firefighters that are made up of individuals from the community that work in the community and then have an interest in serving their community. That's been in a longstanding program, and frankly, we'd be lost, council, without those reserve firefighters. They are there to support this community day and night, 24/7, 365, and I can't say enough about them. In fact, they want you to come down after, they kind of are doing a little impromptu chili feed tonight, so if the council is hungry, after council meeting, stop down to Station 1 and they got a bowl of chili for you that the reserves are putting on, just as a reminder. Now, the Prevention Bureau, kind of our unsung heroes for the fire department are the guys that go out and inspect this community and make sure that our buildings are safe and our lawns are maintained and our snow is scooped, and we're talking about snow here in a minute, I think, and our inspectors do a tremendous job, I can't say enough about them, really. They're where the rubber meets the road as far as development in this community and making sure that we're getting a safe product at the end of the day, and our residents are safe and our commercial buildings are safe, and they have a tough job, and they do it with a lot of courage and a lot of expertise, and they've had 300, or they, we issued 386 building permits this last year. Single-family dwelling permits decreased, however, from 58 to 43. I think that's a sign of the economy. There were five multifamily permits issued with 28 dwelling units issued of this last year as well, so there is some building going on in the community. Most of the building going on has been remodels and things like that. There's single-family starts of single, new single-family dwellings has been down, I think Councilman Lawson can attest to that, and hopefully things are turning around and when we're pointed in the right direction. I know, I know the home builders are working hard, working hard to make that happen, and the community is responding well. We've got an excellent bunch of home builders in our community. Ten permit evaluations, you can see the bar graph there, see what our history's been. And when we go through some of those graphs, you can just kind of look at those and see what the comparisons are. Turn to the back, towards the back page, you can see our numbers for '09 and '10, and some of the ones that I'll point out are, we had 2017 emergency responses. We encountered 1,793 patients. Out of those 1,793, 459 were trauma patients, so the rest were medical. Fire calls, we had 339 calls, we had 41 structure fires last year. Out of those structure fires, 74% were contained through the room of origin and 85% were contained to the structure of origin, so that's, that's noteworthy. We had 43 hazardous material calls and level one callbacks, level two callbacks, we had 31 level one callbacks and 42 level two callbacks, which basically means that's the number of times we called our firefighters, our reserves or paid members back to duty to deal with, with an emergency at hand. You can look through those numbers, and I can sure answer questions if you'd have them. One thing I want to highlight on the last page there is the percentage of patient IVs that was established, intravenous lines that were established in our advanced life support calls, was 85%. That's a remarkable number. That's, that's not always easy bouncing around in the back of an ambulance or in an overturned vehicle or in the darkness of night or wherever we encounter patients in various, various places, but 85% of those attempts were successful. 92%, 92% of the intraocular tubes were successful. That's another incredible number that is, that doesn't mean the person wasn't, if we didn't establish that, they weren't breathing, and we could, we breathed for them with a bag valve mask and the alternative. Our response time was four minutes and 12 seconds, which is very commendable, and 90% of the calls, we got there, first arriving units were there within five minutes, and that meets the national standard. Last year was 85%, and that doesn't meet the national standard or the recommended standard, I should say, not the national standard. It isn't a national, it's a recommended standard from the NFPA, but 90% is what they're, is right on target, so I'm proud that that number is there. We had $1,403,000 in fire loss last year, which is up a little bit unfortunately, and those, a number of residential structure fires, and they add up quickly. So with that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Shane. Any questions for Chief? Thank you for the service you provide. Seeing nothing more, then we'll go on to the sidewalk snow removal issue that's next on presentations here.
All right, well, you're gonna get sick of talking, me yakking up here, I think, but we met a subcommittee and talked about snow, and in particular sidewalk snow, and as the subcommittee met a few weeks ago, I think one of, I don't remember who made it, might have been Clint or someone, suggested that we should brainstorm ways to start, just cause the snow to stop falling, so we thought about that for a while, and we weren't successful with getting any good ideas generated. I don't know, Dale, if you had a good one on that or not, but we didn't really figure out how to do that, so had some suggestions, but really in a nutshell, here's some of our concerns, and I think I just jumped the slide. Here was in the paper here, the mayor pointed this out to me just yesterday, but the Norfolk Post Office is asking for the public's help in keeping their letter carriers safe by shoving a path to their mailbox and making sure their pathways are clear, you know. Snow removal is one of those things that's dynamic, it's hard, it's hard to manage for staff, it's hard to manage the community, there's a million examples, a million reasons why a sidewalk doesn't get scooped, but I can tell you, we receive many, many genuine complaints, not complaints, but concerns really about legitimate citizens out there that use our sidewalks every day to go from point A to point B to conduct their business, to live their lives, and it becomes one of those things that when that snow is not removed from the sidewalk, it becomes a safety concern for the community, it becomes a hazard for the folks that are trying to get up and down our sidewalks, and it's really becomes quickly, becomes a community issue. Whether you're a runner, a walker, or most importantly, a handicapped citizen out there that can't manage to get from your home to a place of business to buy groceries or pay bills or whatever you need to do, if, because there's a big snowbank in the way, it becomes a safety issue, so that's really what the council was concerned about, and they were hearing their constituents' concerns out there, and we're trying to work on good answers, and that's what this presentation is about, you know. One of the suggestions is, we really gotta sit down and talk about it, we gotta get it out in front of the community, we gotta get some media attention, we gotta, we gotta work together, because it, at the end of the day, this issue, in my opinion, becomes a neighbor helping neighbor issue. It's a community helping community, and it really boils down to taking care of each other and taking care of your neighbor out there that might be handicapped or might be elderly or might not have the funds to hire it done. There's a million examples of why snow doesn't get removed. This is our ordinance, this is what it says, and you're all aware of it, and I'll highlight the fact that the red part there that says, "The sidewalk shall be promptly cleaned from mud and other substances and cleared within 24 hours after cessation of snow or sleet storm depositing snow or ice thereon," and that's the crux of the matter. We try to enforce it, I can tell you that staff from the fire department is, goes out there proactively in the fall of the year before we get our big snows, we have a list of properties identified out there that have had some histories of not scooping their snow. Now, it's not an all-inclusive list by any means, but we have some record of, of some properties that never seem to get their snow scooped, that we make contacts in a preemptive mode, in a proactive mode, to try to make sure that that property owner's aware of the ordinance and that they're responsive to it, but then it snows, and, and we have issues, I mean, we have issues of folks not cleaning their snow off, so I got some, sent some staff out to take some pictures, and it didn't take them long to take these pictures, went all over town, we had two snow events, one on January 1st timeframe and one on January 11th timeframe, and this is about 48 hours or 72 hours after, this is the January 3rd pictures that we were, we were able to grab, and it's just, it was a little snow, but as everyone knows, little snows continue to accumulate once it continues to snow, and if you don't scoop your sidewalk, it turns into ice and hardened, hardened-packed snow is an example here, and it becomes more and more difficult to scoop as the time goes on. There's some tracks, you know, and so I just got a million, not a million, but quite a few pictures of different, different examples from different places in town. Here you can see that they, seen that big whole pile of snow, so they scooped around it at least and made another pass in the lawn, but if you're in a handicap, if you're handicapped, you know, it becomes difficult.
I think the important piece that, as far as elected officials have been challenged with is the fact that there is an ordinance, which has just been discussed, and our, how, how far do we go as far as enforcement of that? It becomes very difficult. We, we look to the staff to go out there and make a right decision on actually enforcing what the law says we are to do, but as Shane has expressed, we often hear of the different situations, circumstances that prevent that owner of the property from possibly removing that snow, so I think we can commend our staff on trying to be able to realize that different situations, they, they try to make that first contact with them and let the homeowner know that it is their responsibility and please clear it. That doesn't always prove to be successful for us, though, and I believe Councilman Coy can agree with me that we had one citizen that the reference was made, either enforce it or do away with it. So, you know, that's been part of the discussion that we've been having, and believe me, I know it's, it's not just myself that has gotten some of these calls and concerns, so we thought it was time that we discuss it as a council and certainly hear from citizens too, to let you know what it is that the actual requirement is, and maybe give us some direction on how it is that you feel we should move forward with the enforcement. I don't think our snow days are over yet, as we see even today, so I will look for discussion, obviously, with the council, and if anybody does want to make a statement to help us give direction here, I would ask you to just come forward and certainly speak at the podium, state your name for us.
Mayor, if I could add, add one thing, the subcommittee notes were handed out to the rest of the council, and we haven't been incredibly aggressive as staff because of enforcing the ordinance. I think we were written five maybe tickets for sno- I think we were written five maybe tickets for snow and that's over a long period of time, that's not just this year, as far as sidewalk snow goes. So we haven't been incredibly aggressive and the mayor's words are right on point as far as what does a community expect of their staff and what do they expect of the ordinance and how we follow it. So I just wanted to give that little background that we have not been incredibly aggressive at that because of a lot of different reasons that we could sure to address if someone wants us to address those.
Scott, can you use your microphone? Would that work? Thank you.
My name is Rich Larson, I live on Syracuse Street. Now, every year going to and from places on sidewalks that are not scooped, I have to travel in this street, which is very dangerous. In fact, you can basically see in front of you and you don't know what the person behind you, if it's a safe drive or not, and that comment about enforcing it. Now, this is just an example that I came up with. You'd be issued four tickets. The first one would be a warning, you would get an additional twelve hours. So the city code says you got twenty-four, so warning would give you additional twelve, you're looking at thirty-six hours. You should be, have plenty of time to get your sidewalk cleared off. All right, the second ticket, you'd be charged like say a fifty dollar fine citation and maybe a fifty dollar court cost. Third ticket, all right now, you double your second one, so you're paying a hundred dollar fine, but only a fifty dollar court cost, you're looking at a hundred and fifty dollars. Third one, you'd be paying, let's see, all right, third ticket would be double, so you're paying a hundred, a hundred and fifty. Fourth ticket, you pay three times the amount of your third ticket, so you're looking at three hundred dollars and a fifty dollar court cost. But you need to be really enforcing it, put it on the local radios, stick it in the daily news, put it in the shopper. Every people will know they've got that responsibility. They go out in the summertime, they water the yards, they mow the yards, they fertilize the yards and in the wintertime, they just clean out their driveways.
So you're making recommendation for us, is what you're, and do you see this, you talked about after the first twenty-four hours and there would be a ticket given, given another twelve hours, and then how often are you suggesting that we be going back on this?
I leave that up to you.
Okay.
The second ticket, you have twelve hours.
Right.
If that is not done, you get your, uh, second ticket then, after the twelve hours.
Well, you know what, I appreciate your suggestions here and that's really what we're asking you to be here to do, to help us, you know, as we try to work through some of these ideas. And again, bringing us suggestions is great.
I'm gonna pick on you.
That's fine.
All right, let's just say you're an ordinary person, not the mayor.
I'm an ordinary person.
And you've got the third ticket.
Okay.
But you still, you're hard headed and you refuse to scoop your sidewalk. Now, it's been on the radio.
Sure.
It's been in the daily news, it's been on the, in the shopper, you've got tickets, you've got warning, so you've got all the information to you. So you finally scoop it, but the next time it snows, you think, I'll just let Mother Nature take care of it. Instead of getting a warning, you get your fourth ticket, so you're paying three hundred plus your court cost.
So I don't get to start all over? Okay.
And now, what would you do if you had the opportunity to scoop your walk for nothing or pay a, say a three hundred and fifty dollar fine? What would you take?
I'd be scooping my sidewalk.
Most people would.
You're absolutely right.
And, you know, I'll say, say they, you know, they get that fourth ticket, then they scoop it, but then it snows again, also get the fourth ticket because there's no doors.
I appreciate your input and I can, you know, obviously, I understand some of the concerns that you may have and needing to get to different locations within the city. I admire you for taking that on yourself, but certainly we don't want to see you in the street in those kind of situations. So I'm open to hear anyone else's thoughts or ideas or suggestions on this and your feeling about the fact of whether or not we as the elected officials challenge our crew to get out there and actually start enforcing what is code. Please.
I'd just like to ask Rich a question and ask you to share some of the things that you shared with me when we talked about it. Could you share with the elected officials and just the people here, some of your experiences as you have tried to go around town and what you've encountered as far as maybe sidewalks not being scooped or only being partially scooped and what that does to you?
In, let's see, I was graduate of two thousand and two Northeast College. Now, the course I took, I basically took one time because I was out there for four years. Now, in the wintertime, the college would scoop from the east side of the bridge to the college campus. They did a great job and no matter how deep the snow is, they always cleared it off for their students. But from, as far as I was out there, from the east side of the bridge to First Street, never scooped. And I hadn't traveled in this street, I didn't know about this. Well, one of this, another student mentioned it to my advisor, she mentioned it to me and she goes, "Do you know that when you travel in the street, you blend in the background? So right there, it's very dangerous." I didn't even know about it. For eight years, there is this house that sits on the corner of two snowbird and sea routes and there is a sidewalk on the property, it's never been scooped, never. In fact, I just went by it on Sunday and a person who could walk could go over it. A person with a chair would not be able to use it at all. So they did half big job of scooping it. And a lot of the places, you know, rely on Mother Nature, the warm weather to melt the snow and brought out. So they refused to get out there and scoop. In fact, uh, let's see now, DQ on Riverside, then there's a house and then there's Animal Shelter.
Right.
Animal Shelter and DQ scoop their property, the house, and they even do it, and it's on a similar and sea route. And on that, see, um, the corner of, let's see, Riverside Benjamin on the southeast corner, going from the corner to the Y. That basically gets plowed and no one clears it off. Now, I bought it today and it was finally cleared, but if it doesn't, I'm looking at, if the sidewalks are cleared, I could go, I'd have to go all the way down to the senior high, cross over, come back up just to get my due business over on that side of the street.
Well, I think you've given us a pretty clear picture. And I certainly commend you, like I say, for taking time out to come and share your stories with us and again, challenge us as elected officials on how we move forward with this, so thank you. I'm sure that we're gonna need him to sign in for us too, so wherever that slip is. Well, Scott, if you would, is there anyone else that wants to come forward and address the issue and talk to it? If you'll do, please come forward and sign for us and state your name.
Yeah, my name is Mick Housman. I live on seven oh nine South Second and yeah, I'm very disappointed with, I called the police station, they addressed the people that lived on the street, they did their part, but the city property or what the, I don't know, the city didn't really actually buy it, it was more or less abandoned and they took it over, but yet there's still sidewalks that are not getting scooped. I got an eleven-year-old boy and I don't really like him walking the streets, I don't like walking the streets, you know, and that's just something that, yeah, I don't, I don't think it's being taken care of because, and what really irks me is when there's, I see city vehicles drive by that area, you know, at least five times a day. Well, I mean, I would do it, but I'm not getting paid to do city work. I work for the state of Nebraska, I have the Norfolk Regional Center, I was in charge of the snow removal, that, you know, that was, we never had any problems because we did our job and we did the best we could. If there was any, you know, anything we could do better, we did it, you know, and that's one thing, I think, you know, it'd be nice if you just have people take the initiative, if they see something, you know, mention it, take five minutes, stop, just, you know, do incentive to clear the way for everybody, you know, I mean, I'm not saying anyone in particular, just, you know, clear a way for people to pass through.
I appreciate that. Now, can I ask you, are you, did I hear you right in that the property you're referring to?
Mm-hmm.
Is owned by the city or is it one of these that, what's the address so that we can make sure that?
There is no address because there's no house there no more. It's those houses that they just removed. I know there's, city workers go there, it must be part of the sewer or something they work at.
What street are we on?
Well, be around Park, Philip, somewhere around in there, I believe.
What's the north-south street?
Um, well, it'd be on Second Street.
Second Street?
Yeah, and then, because, now, I couldn't tell you right off the top of my head, but Dana Apartments has got apartment on the one side, then there's little brick apartments on one side of Second Street and on the other side, there's the brick apartments and then there's a house, alley, and then a big open area to where two houses, they were taken down by Mr. Batel, he's a friend of mine too. Anyway, he got rid of the houses and stuff, you know. I'm not sure exactly who took care of the mowing, I know a person from Salvation Army was down there taking care of the mowing this summer and stuff, but, you know, I don't know, even know if it is actually the city's property or not, but I mean, something has to be done because, like I said, I don't, I had an incident where I slipped, I dislocated my shoulder, I'm still working through that, you know, so I mean, it's something that, you know, I very, you know, much do not want to happen to my son or something worse, you know, so that's my point, I guess.
Very good. We'll find the location, we'll check it out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Bob Smith. I just have a question. The only enforcement that I saw on that ordinance was that you'd go and scoop their sidewalk for them and make them pay for it? What, is there a penalty besides that?
Chief Meisner? I'll let Chief address that, but there's other, there is other opportunities for enforcement.
The ordinance provides for a notice that can be given by the city and the notice has to be at least twenty-four hours. And once that notice is given, if enforcement action is taken, if a citation is issued and then city employees are directed to go clear that sidewalk, the reasonable cost, whatever that would be, whatever the cost was incurred by the city to remove that snow off of there, can then be provided to the prosecutor and the prosecutor can ask the court then to order as part of the judgment, when the citation reaches court, part of that judgment would be restitution for the actual removal, be ordered by the defendant to pay that as part of their fine court costs and then the restitution. So that is one option that would be available.
I think the other part of your question where you say there doesn't provide for anything else, in the, in the second paragraph of that section twenty-two dash one, it's kind of hidden in there, where it says, "It's an offense if you don't, it's an offense if you fail to clean it more than, after the passage of more than twenty-four hours." Because it's called an offense, that gives the opportunity, if I'm the sidewalk owner, for me to get a ticket for, or a citation for not doing that and then I can be fined for that. So it doesn't really provide that in here, that all goes with it being categorized as an offense. And any offense under the city code, if I either, I think it says, "If I either fail to do something that I'm required to do or I do something that I'm prohibited from doing, I can be fined anywhere from zero to five hundred dollars." So that's kind of hidden in there.
And as long as, yes, I'm up here, I'd like to mention one other thing. When it comes to cleaning the sidewalks, sometimes we will see people make an effort and it will be like one run down with the snow blower or one shovel width and for people who can walk, that's generally enough to be able to get through. The problem is though, with gentlemen such as Rich, who rely on a wheelchair, they pretty much need the entire width of that sidewalk to be able to get through or if you have people meeting, you need pretty much that width. So if people are gonna actually clean the sidewalk, that means edge to edge, not just a path through the snow in the middle of the sidewalk.
Okay. Thanks, Steve. Anyone else?
I just wanted to make one more comment because tonight, as I was coming down here, there was, there's college kids that live right on the corner of Pazwalk and Second on the southeast side that, I mean, they do a wonderful thing. They had a little lawnmower, they went ahead and they did the whole sidewalk down my block and I mean, stuff like that, I mean, I have to commend, you know, I mean, and I wish there were more people like that, you know. There's a couple ladies that I do their sidewalks for them, you know, point blank, you know, they tell me, they say, "Well, you ain't gonna catch me out there." Well, that's good, you know, I mean, I don't expect that, so, I mean, and that's what, just, I wish the community itself would, you know, think too, you know, deep in their heart, you know, hey, everybody has trying times, so if you can help somebody out, it's really great.
Thanks, I appreciate your comment there.
Mick, that's an important comment and I think it's important for the community to realize that happens a lot throughout the community. I think there's many, many examples where we have neighbors helping neighbors and that spirit of cooperation is what it's all about and we need to continue to support that, so thanks for that comment.
Can I ask, can I ask him a question?
Certainly, sir.
The house that you were talking about that was tore down, was that a, was that a Second Street address? a, uh, would that, was that a Second Street address or was that a Park Avenue address?
I'm thinking, I'm thinking Park, but I, I don't know for sure.
Okay, and one of the, one of the things that I'm, I'm thinking that might be, just to try to answer your question, and I could be wrong, many times I'm wrong, but, uh, there is a program that the city's been involved with, which is a CR grant program, where there has been houses acquired, the property's been, uh, the property's been torn down, and then the property's been transferred to an individual, uh, on the condition that they build a house. So, and, and then that house is put back on there. So, one of the things, and one of those addresses is in the two-hundred block of West Park, I believe, just going through some emails on my computer here, and so, uh, that may be one of the things, and as the mayor said, we'll check, but just to try to give you some answer tonight, that may be, be one of the, that may be one of the houses that was acquired and, and, and turned over to somebody to build one of those houses on.
I wanted to agree with, yes, we need to remove our snow, and we have multiple properties, so the properties that, uh, we have multiple tenants in, we even do the scooping on that and get it done in a timely manner. But last year, on one occasion, my mother-in-law, living on a corner of Riverside Benjamin Avenue and Nineteenth Street, had over a five-foot pile of city snow, since she's a corner lot, on her sidewalk. She's seventy-five years old. She can't remove dried hard snow five foot deep. It took five adults and one child four hours to shovel a path through there. Um, I know the city doesn't have a lot of places to put snow, but if you drive around this community, most of the time, it's piled up on the corners where the sidewalks, you know, meet, and so I can see where that is a difficulty. I don't know what the solution there is, but I understand not everybody can scoop all that through there, whether they try or not. And for people that can't afford scooping, I'm sure that with our parochial schools in here in town, with their community service hours, um, all the agencies we have here in town, if they're really legitimately can't afford it, somebody would do it for them.
You know, I, I'd like to think you're right there, and, and, you know, looking back at last year, that was a very difficult year. I have heard, um, Jim Cook advise, because of some of the situations, as you refer to, when the snow is removed and piled on a corner, if you follow up with phone calls to the city, to the street department down there, they do work, try hard on days following. Once they get the streets all cleared, they will go back and help with trying to remove some of those in which there's been a large amount of snow placed. So, again, you know, I can only suggest that, I believe even on the city website, there is a, well, let me just say, I would suggest you give a call and see if maybe you can't get some help, because I do know in the past that they have attempted to try to get back to some of those places where they have piled it up, so. Are you hiding back there, Jim? I'm sorry, I didn't, do you want to address this at all? I apologize. I didn't even, no, I did not.
I'm Jim Cook, street director. Over the last thirty-three years, we have answered many, many calls. Now, the first day or two removing snow, we can't possibly go back to those corners. But the example I give, when you have an intersection, you go through one way and you go back the other way, two legs of that intersection, you're gonna leave a pile of snow. Our last ten-inch snow, we're gonna have three-foot drifts. Like Wayne, Nebraska, do we leave it and you have a bump? You think my phone would ring off the hook if we left the bump? The only way to do it is to push them into the corner. We have no choice, other than leaving that bump, and if that's what the council would like, we'll sure do that. I would never recommend that. I don't know how the places do it that use that policy. So, we have taken many, many calls. Now, you have to stand in line because there's so many corners. You're right, there are many, many corners that are pushed up, but we'll get as many of those leveled out as we can. We don't go down to the bare pavement, we'll go down to within six inches or so and take that snow out of there, and we've done that for years. So, as the mayor says, just call us, we'll do everything we can on that part.
Thanks, Jim, I appreciate that.
Can they use this? Can they use the citizen request?
Can they use that quick link, Jim? The citizen request there, that is on the website, to give addresses?
Sure.
Can? And, okay, very good. So, that's, it is on the city website, take advantage of that. All right, anyone else? Okay, I think you've challenged this, counsel. I don't know that we, is there a discussion you want to have tonight, or is it something we, my suggestion would be, maybe we go back as a subcommittee and further the discussion and, and take some of the thoughts and ideas and recommendations. So, again, I appreciate all of you that have come out tonight to share your thoughts and concerns with us, and certainly it will be taken under advisement. Stay tuned, we certainly will let our, um, media know the outcome and make sure that we reach out to all citizens so that you're made aware of it, so.
Mayor, I may add one more comment, if I may.
Sure.
I apologize. Um, fire hydrants, please, please help with fire hydrants. Um, if it continues to snow, like last year, we had a tremendous, tremendous potential for problems with fire hydrants not being scooped, and we really, the street department helps, and, and obviously the fire department, the water department, all, we try to identify those hydrants and get out there and scoop them, but we really, really need the citizens' help on that. So, if you have a fire hydrant in your vicinity there, it is, um, a great benefit to us if you help scoop that out. We appreciate it, thanks.
Shane, maybe to add to that, use the same recommendation that the mayor did, that if there's some elderly folks or people that aren't able to dig out around the hydrants, to make sure to give us a call, so that we're aware of those problem areas, so we can get them taken care of.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. With that, I think we're gonna move on. Enough on the snow, let's go to a public hearing here, at the request of Dan Gary and Connie Gary, for a zoning change from I-3 to I-1 at fourteen oh six Channel Road. I'd like to open the hearing and look for discussion, and, I think, Scott, this one's gonna be you.
Yes, your honor. Honored counsel, this is, uh, one leg of a, a very long, uh, conversation that we've had with the Garys and, and a potential buyer on that property, in their attempt to try to make, make way for the ability to refurbish that home and stay within the guidelines of our regulations. We've, we've looked at ordinance modifications, we've looked at various things to try to create a pathway for them to, uh, to secure the privileges, to do the things that they want to do, but not, uh, compromise the integrity of the zoning regulations at the same time, and that has been a bit challenging, and, and I appreciate everybody's conversation. We've had multiple subcommittee conversations on this, um, great input from the elected officials and from, uh, various people in regard to this, as well as the planning commission. This zoning change to I-1 is part of that process. This, this change from I-3 to I-1 would open the door for the opportunity for a residential caretaker type of operation to occur on that property. I-3, uh, there's basically two primary things that, that the whole county industrial tract, the combination of I-3 zoning does, as I believe Councilman Langy pointed out in one of our subcommittees, there's some express prohibition to residential things and to retail things, and absent those two elements, there really is no way they could have tagged along this caretaker, uh, conditional use permit that would be forthcoming, should this zoning change occur in its present zoning. The need to move from I-3 to I-1 is the first step in that process. Uh, for those of you that, that recall, we have done many, many changes from I-3 to I-1 over the years. The Garys themselves are probably the best example of projects in this community that would not have happened had they not sought that zoning change. Um, the, uh, United Rentall that's recently built on Riverside is one example of those, uh, going farther up the street in that same neighborhood, the Harley Davidson facility presently, or originally resided in I-3. Because those properties never, ever realized a great value from what the statute originally intended to do with the tax relief that was granted with those county industrial tracts, many, many, many of those areas that had been pre- determined to be I-3 have migrated back to another industrial category that creates some more flexibility in what they want to do there. So, in reality, whether the caretaker element of this was coming behind us or not, this change from I-3 to I-1 probably affords the landowner some, some options and flexibility in what he does with the land that he doesn't currently have, and would allow some business potentials to occur on that property that would be consistent with the comprehensive plan, it would be consistent with, with what the expectation is for development in that part of the area. So, that is the first step of that. Should this zoning change be approved, the, the applicants will be coming to the planning commission with an expectation to, to attempt to secure that caretaker or watchman privilege, which would allow them to have an industrial residential combination flavor happening on that property. We've done several of those in the community and have all been very successful in allowing that co-mingling of that to, to occur, but it doesn't give the permanency of the proposed ordinance change that we all felt, or that we received some, some negative impact about pursuing. So, we've kind of shifted gears again, and I apologize for the confusion on this one. It's been a lot of long, hard, um, well-intended conversation by lots of folks trying to accommodate the, the request, but not contaminate our regulations along the way. So, this is the first step in that, it's, this, this portion of it, what we're dealing with tonight is an I-3 movement to I-1, that's what's on the table tonight, uh, and if you have any questions about that, I'd be glad to try to confuse you some more, I apologize.
No. Scott, thanks. Any questions, counsel, at all? Okay. This is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that wants to come forward and speak? Either in favor or questions? Mr. Gary?
Yeah, Dan Gary is my name, and, uh, I, I speak in favor of this, because this is what we want to do, and this has been on everybody's plate for a long time, so I won't take any of your time here to, um, if you have any questions, that's fine, but I'm here to speak in favor of it.
Very good. All right. Thanks, Dan. Any questions for Dan at all? If not, anyone else that wants to speak? Seeing none, then, I would ask for the planning commission report.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on December twenty-first, two thousand and ten, for a zone change from I-3 limited industrial to I-1 light industrial at fourteen oh six Channel Road, at the request of Daniel E. and Connie J. Gary. The Garys own this twenty-acre tract on Channel Road, which is zoned I-3, and the property has been removed from the county industrial tract. Their goal is to rezone the property to I-1, so the new owner can rebuild the existing dwelling on the property as a caretaker's residence. If the rezone is approved, the new owner is applying for a caretaker conditional use permit, so the Garys can store equipment and the property owner can live on the property. The planning commission recommend approval of this zone change on a nine-to-zero vote.
Thank you. With that, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion for consideration of ordinance number fifty-one forty-nine.
I'd like to introduce ordinance fifty-one forty-nine on first reading, your honor.
A second.
Have a move.
Can I speak in discussion on this ordinance, the way it's written? Um, for some reason, I don't think the legal description got transferred right from, from the letter that came in. And then I would have a question for Clint. Um, we're doing a zoning change, this legal, this ordinance includes the easement across a piece of property, so we wouldn't do a zoning change on the driveway easement, right? So, I don't think the bottom part easement should be on here, but that, that should be.
So, you questioned the legal description, I see. You showed Jim and I that.
The, the legal description, and I apologize for having this done ahead of time. I didn't read it, I mean, I looked at it, but I didn't study it till I come in here. But the, the legal description from the county, county coming out of industrial tract doesn't match the one that's on here, and includes another piece of property with the tail that's zoned agriculture down below. So, and then it includes the easement, the driveway easement, so.
Do we need to table this?
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's the last thing you went, isn't it, to table?
Well, if the ordinance isn't written correctly, we can't pass it.
We don't have any choice, if it's not correct.
Scott, do you have, uh, the, any of the, do you have the file with any of those things that he's talking about? Because I'm, I'm clueless.
This one is right. This one is right. This one, this comes down here. Can we, um, should come down here.
Check line, set thirty-six, lens.
Clint? Could we, uh, consider, could the council consider passing that on first reading and then make the corrections and pass it on second and third?
Well, there's, there's a couple of, I think there's a couple of options available to us at this point in time. One might be to, uh, I, I don't know what else, uh, if there's, if there's anything there, we could go off in the room here and look at this and pass, and you could go on to some other things on the agenda, and then come back to this matter on the agenda and see what we can do in the.
That's on the list.
Yeah, that's not, that's not the same as exhibit.
Can we get, can we just, can we just move on to another item? When you come back to this item, you've still got the motion.
Yeah, we're okay?
You're asking.
Yeah, you're okay?
Yeah. Okay. All right. So, what we'll do is allow this just to remain on the table, and we'll move on forward. We have a timeout, Dave, but, can we go to the regular agenda? All right. So, you.
Yeah, we'll see what we can find out.
Oh, now, are you gonna be able to lead me through this change? All right. You were gonna talk to this.
We'll let those guys go, I'll go try in a minute.
All right. All right. We're gonna jump to the regular agenda before us tonight, and there's a motion for, um, request, we had the, we passed on first reading at the December twentieth, the city council meeting, the ordinance number fifty-one forty-eight vacating the north-south alley, which we are here tonight to consider on the second reading. However.
And we need it, we need a motion.
All right. I'm gonna ask for a motion.
I'll introduce ordinance number fifty-one forty-eight on second reading.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Now, we need, at this point, a motion to amend the ordinance on second reading to provide that the utility easement on the vacated alley extends only over the east ten foot thereof, instead of over the vacated alley in its entirety. And I'm gonna let you speak to that.
I need a motion first, though.
Oh, I need a motion to amend, so can I ask for a motion to amend with, from this group?
So moved, your honor.
And a motion in a second. And if you'll speak to it.
Okay, what, what's happening here is, uh, as the mayor mentioned, that was passed on first reading. The, if, if the ordinance were to be amended in the manner that's talked about here, when the, when the, when the vacation of the alley occurs, there, the statute requires, and there are some utilities back there, there's, uh, there's a couple of things. And when the, in the first reading form, there was a ten-foot, there was a twenty-foot alley vacated, and it was provided, the way it was written and passed, for there to be a, an easement granted for the utilities. What's happened in the meantime is there's been discussion with, uh, the electric folks, with the cable folks, and with the telephone folks, which are the utilities that are back there. And as a result of that, the amendment that is going to be before the council would say that the twenty-foot alley is vacated, there is a utility easement that is put in place for the east ten foot, for the east half of the alley. Okay? And the, if, if that is the amendment that's embraced by the council, at the end of the day, um, a couple of issues about how we've gotten here. What's happened is that as the design goes forward, as they, as they move forward with that, they're, they're refining that. One of the things that's missing at this point in time is, DLR is still waiting for the completed survey work from Olson Associates, and they haven't got that. They don't have the final boundary survey, so while they know kind of where they're at, they're waiting for the boundary survey to, uh, assure them that what they're seeing on the maps is correct. So, they might, they might wiggle a little bit, but they don't expect any big changes. So, at the end of the day, tonight, if we could move that forward with the amendment and with a, with consideration by the council, only on second reading, that would allow for further refinement of, of that, of that plan. The notion being, and Shane, you correct me if I'm wrong, what I heard him talk about the last time, is that, as Shane was mentioning earlier on in the discussion, there may be, if, right now, if we were to take a snapshot and see what we think is happening, we think that the fence that would divide the park from the residential properties might be moved ten foot over with the utility, with the utility easement in place, and, and for all practical purposes, we could kind of talk about what's there right now as kind of being an informal twenty-foot utility easement, um, as kind of being an informal 20-foot utility easement. And that's really what's talked about, that it's that refinement and the notion of, that's what they think is going to be utilized and where they actually think that fence would be to define the property, between your properties and the neighbors' properties and the park. Is that correct, Shane?
Yes.
Is that what you heard?
That's what I heard, yeah.
So, does that, does that help, Mayor?
Are you clear?
That it could be 10 feet instead of 20 feet into our property.
Right. Right. Okay.
So, if we, what would happen is the alley that's there, we'd really see, the part would be the fence moving 10-foot, notwithstanding what's happening here. I think the last time that we talked with them, last Wednesday, was contemplating the actual division fence, if you will, moving 10 feet, notwithstanding the vacation of the alley.
Yes.
That's what I heard.
What would happen with the other 10 feet of the vacated alley? Would that still be...
It would be there like the 20-foot is now.
It's still city-owned, where you could move this fence in 20 years on us again.
And I maintain it for these years. Is that...
Yeah, well, you could say that you maintain it, you could say that you have the benefit of it, you could say that you haven't paid any taxes on it. It kind of depends upon where you're at there. You know, I mean, there's an ebb and flow to that one. But those are the discussions that are ongoing, and that's why, at the end of the night, with the, without that survey in place, and all of those things are going to be more refined. But that was the information that we had as of Wednesday of last week when we met with DLR.
Counsel, any questions?
Yeah, I got a question. What are we gaining by not vacating the, I mean, even if we vacate the entire 20 feet, what stops us from locating the fence 10-foot in that way?
There are a couple of things. First of all, so that we're clear, the ordinance passed on first reading, and if the amendment were to be adopted, would still vacate the entirety of the 20-foot alley. The reservation of the easement would be not over the, for the utilities, would be not over the entire 20 feet, but just over the east 10 feet. None of that really has anything to say about what would, I mean, the fence could be put any place in there. It still remains the city's property, just like it remains an alley, even if we've picnicked on it or done whatever we've done with it. And there are some concerns, some desirability of having a straight line with that fence so that it's not doing like that. There's a concern about, I don't think, it's not on the one building that's very, very close to that easement, so that there, is that on your property?
Next door.
It's on your neighbor's property. But some concern so that there's sufficient space if that fence is put all the way out there so that, so that there can be access around that building for that, around the building that was there. And so, there's still some discussions about all of those things.
Okay, but, I mean, even if, even if we covered up the entire thing with the 20-foot easement on it, what's the ill effects of that?
What are the...
There's a downside to it.
The downside to it is that...
You can't build a structure...
On the west side of the struc, on the west side of that easement, part of those bleachers may sit there, and you don't want the utilities underneath the bleachers.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah, it just took me a while to get to it, Jim. I apologize. So, that's why, that's why the restriction in the easement is that, is that we found out that that's where we would have, don't want them underneath bleachers.
Well said. Is that it? Anything else?
I have one stupid question, though.
Not a stupid question, believe me.
These are utility easements, right? How are they ever going to get back there if they would need to? How? I mean, we have our yard fenced in. I have to turn on my fence so somebody can drive back there?
Yes, yes. That's an easement, yeah.
That's an easement. When, you know, I guess, I sympathize with you to a certain extent that way, but this same issue we went through two years ago over in, over against a flood control area. And we specifically told people, you know, you've got to get that stuff out of there. And I sympathize with the fact that, yes, you put a fence in there, or whoever put a fence in there before that, you know, you had the benefit of being able to have that property and use that property, but it's the same as the flood control situation. I mean...
Well, the only reason we put a fence in was because the habitat for your humanity property next to us drove across our property to put their boat in their backyard.
Across your property or the alley?
And so, we put a fence in. It's not that it's driving across the alley.
Sometimes fences...
There's not an alley back there.
Sometimes fences make good neighbors, but the other part of that would be, if you took, if you took any residential plating that would be new today, or would be, would be new since we had, since we quit putting alleys in the back, okay? You know, if every neighbor builds a fence, every neighbor has a fence on top of the, on top of the utility easements, which routinely run both along the side of the property and along the back. So, everybody's got that. Now, depending upon what the, what the problem was, or what the need was, what was, what was happening there, Dennis and I are thinking that, are those utilities, are you thinking they're going underground now?
They are underground, if I'm not mistaken.
I think the electricity is.
They're currently overhead, and I believe that the services to the homes that are overhead will remain overhead, but the distribution system by NPPD may be underground. Well, and all I was going to say is that when it comes time to, if it comes time to access those utilities, you know, there'd be an effort made to do that. If there's an accommodation that could be made off of the city property, that would, that would be utilized by the utilities probably, even though that's not where the easements act, correct, Dennis?
Most certainly.
So, you know, it's going to depend upon what the nature of it is, and what the problem is, and what's the best way to get there. So, you know, I don't think that we're going to create any problems other than the problems that come with having utilities in our backyard.
Yeah, that's fine.
And basically, what you're saying is, best-case scenario, we would access it from Memorial Field side. Wouldn't affect them.
Well, I mean...
And even if it did, you'd have to peel back your chain link to allow a truck to go through and then put your chain link back up.
There'd be some effort to be made at cooperation, depending upon the nature of the problem, what they got to get at. Certainly.
Okay.
But one thing I wanted to point out, if we pass this on second reading, there will be no more discussion. Next time, we'll pass it on third reading, so.
That was the other thing that also concerned me, is, we're doing this on second and we're wanting to make some other, I mean, third doesn't allow for discussion.
Well, here's another, here's another, here's another option available to you, would be to amend the ordinance with the amendment that you have a motion for, and then just pass it on first reading and leave it come back at the next meeting for second reading. Our concern was more that we, that we, that we don't pass it on three readings. But certainly, if we pass it on first reading, I also think that, and I don't know if Shane and Dennis would agree with me, I think that by the time we get to where we're bidding this, we ought to have the alley vacated.
I would hope that we would be there.
Yeah. So, if, you know, if we stop, if we, if we just amend the ordinance and pass it on first reading, we'd be good to go and wait for that survey and additional information.
And then can we move forward to pass the ordinance on first reading again?
Yes.
And then we could...
And then stop.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so, right now, we are...
If you want to pass this on second reading, we're fine with it as is, since, or do you have to do it this way?
I don't think that we're fine.
Counselor, very good.
I shouldn't say "we aren't." I would say "I am not."
We could box ourselves in and have problems, so we need to...
Great.
I think the suggestion of passing the amendment and then passing on first reading is appropriate manner.
All right. So, right now, we have a motion on the floor to amend on first reading. Do I have a...
Just to amend.
Yep, just to amend.
Just to amend.
Just to amend. Okay. All right. There's a motion and a second, right?
We need a roll call.
Okay. Now, we're ready to vote on amending.
All council persons voting in the affirmative.
Motion to amend ordinance 5148 carries. Now, we're going to go back? No.
Right, the number five. Just need a motion to pass it on first reading as amended.
Okay, okay. Gotcha. All right. Now, I'm looking for a motion to pass ordinance 5148 as amended on first reading.
Your Honor, I would move that we pass ordinance 5148 as amended on first reading.
Second that.
Okay. A motion and a second. Any other discussion now? If not, short title?
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to vacate the north-south alley immediately west of and adjacent to lots 2 through 8, block 9, Pazwalk 6th addition to the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, located in the southwest quarter of Section 26, Township 24 North, Range 1 West of the 6th PM, City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
All right. And with that, if you will, please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5148 as amended carries on first reading.
All right. Now, should we go back to the public hearing? Or the consideration, I'm sure it was closed. The public hearing was closed, and we were under consideration of ordinance 5149.
Dennis?
Dennis, are you going to? Thanks again for being here tonight. You bet.
If you want to follow along, I'm going to be talking about enclosure 26, which is ordinance number 5149. We need to make an amendment to the ordinance as it's printed, and in Section 1, insert after the parentheses, District, and A, parentheses, Agricultural District, end of insert. So, it'll read that the I-3, open parentheses, Limited Industrial District, close parentheses, and Ag, open parentheses, Agricultural District, close parentheses, zoning on the following described real estate to RET. And then, in the legal description, you've got parcel 1, and then there's an and, delete the rest of the legal description from the and to the end of that legal description. And with those modifications, I believe that the ordinance will do what was the intention of the city and the applicant in what was advertised and shown in our advertisements, both at the planning commission level and for the city council.
Your Honor, the parcel in question that is going to be rezoned included a small triangle that perhaps Mr. Geary wasn't clear whether that was going to be included in this project. It was always our intent that it would be. We don't like multiple zoning categories on one single land parcel, so it's, it's always the intent to try not to have invisible lines that don't match, you know, boundary lines that are fixed. Sometimes a river or some barrier can become those, but in reality, it's often a lot line. That is absent here. So, it encompasses the entire parcel of property that we expected all along to be rezoned from I-3 to I-1. There's some language on there that identifies an easement that accesses this property from the highway that was, that just doesn't need to be included. It travels over somebody else's land, and so the description of that easement's just being removed from the legal. But the parcel in question is rezoning exactly what it was supposed to and what we intended for it all along, so.
Okay.
So, what the changes Dennis made.
Are you good, Dan? Okay. Okay. All right. So, are we going to...
Following the same type.
Yep, we're going to go through this again, then. We're going to look to amend ordinance number, let's see, 5149.
That's fine.
All right. We're amending 5149 as expressed by Dennis. I don't know how better to say it. Do I, can I have a motion?
I want to amend my motion.
No, just a motion to amend.
Second that, a motion to amend.
Okay. We have a motion to amend 5149.
As Dennis stated.
As stated by Dennis, and with a second, so we're ready to vote on amending. Right? Please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative, ordinance, on amending ordinance 5149.
Okay, so now...
So, now you're, you want a motion?
To pass ordinance 5149. Okay, so I need a...
First reading as amended.
Okay. So, now I need a motion, once again, to, as, to pass ordinance number 5149 as amended on first reading.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
All right. A motion with a second. Any other discussion at all? If not, then, we're ready for a short title.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay. Will you please vote?
All council persons voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5149 as amended is passed on first reading.
You want this passed, Dennis?
I'm fine with it being passed on three readings.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and pass ordinance number 5149 on second and third.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion with a second to suspend on, let's see, ordinance number 5149 as amended again. Were no further discussion, I don't believe, so if you will, please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5149 as amended carries on second and third reading.
Very good. All right. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on. We're looking for authorization tonight for Solid Waste Division to advertise for bids for one additional truck scale for the transfer station.
Go move, Your Honor. Second that, Your Honor.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion at all? If not, I would ask you to please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative.
Next is consideration of approval of a change order number 1 with J.H. Hesby Company for the Northeast Regional Pump Station and Pipeline Project resulting in a change of substantial and final completion dates with no change in contract amount.
Your Honor, due to a conflict of interest, I will need to be removing myself at this point in time from the council.
Very good. Counselor, thank you. And I'm looking, then, for a motion for consideration of approval.
So moved, Your Honor.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion with a second. Any discussion at all? If not, if you will, please vote. This one is pushed on. Need to turn him off, Dale. Thank you.
All council persons voting in the affirmative, Councilperson Langley abstaining motion carries.
And last, I'm looking for a motion for consideration of ordinance, number 5150, amending sections of the city code to change reference of Memorial Park to Veterans Memorial Park.
Your Honor, I'd like to introduce ordinance 5150 on first reading. Second that, Your Honor.
We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any further discussion?
The only comment I want to make is I had a couple of phone calls today, and a couple of people read it on some news thing today that it was Central Park being changed, and this is Memorial Field, basically.
Right.
We're just adding the word Veterans, not Central Park. They thought we were changing Central Park, so I just wanted to make the comment that this is Memorial Field down on First Street where the new football field's going to be. We're going to change that.
Right. And just for clarification, for a council that wasn't a part of the discussion, when we had this, when the veterans came to us some months ago asking us to consider changing Central Park name to Memorial Park, and we asked them to consider working with us as we worked into this new project that we were looking to go forward with being currently what we know as Memorial Field, and asking for them to recognize we'd like to then place Veterans Memorial Park as the named park. So, just a little history for those who knew it. So, I appreciate you making clarification on that, Dave. I did not see that, but certainly could be very misleading. So, is there any other discussion on this at all?
Wasn't in one of the discussions, Mayor, that this was originally dedicated as Veterans Memorial Park?
That was our understanding. That was our understanding.
And maybe not officially, but...
Right. When it was first, I think that, who did the little bit of background search for us? I think Pat Merzany did on that and forwarded us that information when we were working on the Central Park idea, so thus where we are tonight. So that being said, any other discussion? If not, I need a short title on this, Beth.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend sections 2-51, 18-1, and 18-17 of the official city code to change references to Memorial Park in those sections to Veterans' Memorial Park, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
If you will please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5150 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I'll make the motion adjourned.
All right. There is a motion to adjourn. You know, wanna pass on second and third?
Do you, do you wanna do that on second and third reading?
You can if you want.
I mean, I make a motion to suspend the rules and, and pass this ordinance on second and third.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to suspend second and third reading of, of the ordinance number 5150. Any further discussion at all? If not, I'm gonna ask that you please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5150 carries on second and third.
Now, I'd like to restate my motion.
You certainly may, and we are adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.
Do you think that there's still chili over there, gentlemen?
There's a little clock.
Oh, come on now, Dave. I know some of those firefighters, and I don't think that's true.
Talk to Mr. Flight.
Yes.
He's gonna pay the ticket.
Is he?
Yeah, he's gonna vote, yeah. They've talked to... Go take my vote.